Good morning. This is Terry Lineback, Chairperson of the Cordova Recreation and Park District Board of Directors, calling this special meeting on January 24th, 2022 to order at 9:01 a.m. Thank you for joining us on Zoom this morning. This meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to comment on items as they are heard. We will be following some procedures to keep the meeting running smoothly. Please, for all participants, please mute your microphone or phone when you are not speaking. You may have to unmute yourself in order to speak. We will follow the order on the posted agenda. The chair will ask each board member in the same order for their comments or questions. Now, if the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. We received advanced notification that Secretary Yearwood would be a little late joining us this morning. Director Sloan?
Present.
Director Danzel?
Here.
Secretary Reyes? My Vice Chair Reyes, my apologies. I see that she's on. And Chair Lineback?
Here. So, item B is public comment.
Thank you. At a special meeting, the public comment period is limited to only those items described on this agenda per California Government Code. Members of the public may comment when the items are heard. Speakers are limited to three minutes. The board is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on this agenda.
Since we can't hear anything not listed on this agenda, I assume there's no public comment at this time. Okay, so we'll move on to item C, our public hearing.
Thank you. Item C1 is public hearing number two, receive public input on the composition of voting districts for a potential transition from at-large to by-district elections for the Board of Directors pursuant to the California Voting Rights Act. No action to be taken by the Board of Directors at this meeting.
Okay, so we are going to open the public hearing at this time, which is 9:03 a.m.
Thank you, and I'd like to welcome back Mr. Rex Road to lead our presentation.
Okay, good morning, everyone. I'm gonna try to share my presentation, which, for those of you who are with us last week, can everyone see this? Can you see it, Danielle?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, for those of you who were with us last week, this is a very similar presentation. Really, the only thing that's really changed is a couple of the, is the date, and then a couple of the headers that we had into this as we try to be conscious of the fact that you all are not redistricting, but you are doing districting for the first time. So, we'll try to make sure that we do that, although it's a little bit of a habit to talk about it in terms of redistricting. So, similar to our presentation last time, the process that you're going through is just for some definitions early on in this. You know, there's at-large versus district elections. This board's been elected at-large in the past and is contemplating the idea of going to district elections where they would be represented by a specific sub-area within the geography of the park district. And so, some people might ask, well, why, why go to district elections? And oftentimes, these would be the reasons that probably objectively advocates for district elections would use would be geographic diversity, making sure that people come from different parts of your overall special district. You tend to see more minority representation with district elections as opposed to at-large. There's also lower barriers to entry where candidates can run in much smaller districts as opposed to a very large area of maybe 100,000 or more people. And that people will often argue that district election advantages is that their elected representative are closer to the people because they represent fewer of them and have the opportunity for more individual contact. So, I want to make a distinction in terms of the California Voting Rights Act versus the Federal Voting Rights Act. And oftentimes, when Fabian and Eddie and I are on calls like this, there is some confusion overall in terms of the difference between the two. The California Voting Rights Act basically allows, was a measure passed by the legislature. And if there can be any proof of racially polarized voting and can be shown by any, any attorney can place a demand letter in front of a special district or a school district or a city or a county, or not a county, they're already done by district elections. The remedy is to go to district elections in those areas. And so, it's not a remedy of a particular kind of district, except that it follows the Federal Voting Rights Act. But the remedy under the California Voting Rights Act is simply to go to district elections. And so, you see a lot of cities throughout the Sacramento area and special districts that are going through this process now to go to district elections. Oftentimes, people use redistricting and reapportionment interchangeably, and they're not the same thing. Districting and redistricting is the process of going through and drawing districts within an entity. And reapportionment is simply apportioning districts among the states usually. And so, we don't, we're not reapportioning or apportioning the Cordova Park District. We're simply going through the process of districting it. There was, there were five board members before. There's still plans on being five. If you wanted to go to seven or nine, that's a different process and not one that we're doing right now. Overall, just wanted to talk about the five general principles of redistricting. And so, and I'll give you some examples of each of these individually. But population equality is the first principle of redistricting, and that applies to every districting process that exists out there. There's also the Federal Voting Rights Act, and you say, well, we're, we're not federal officers, but that law still applies to districting or redistricting processes in California or anywhere. Overall, there's communities of interest. We'll talk a little bit about that. The idea of compactness, which actually isn't that much of an issue in California. And then simply contiguity, which I don't imagine would be a problem for your, as you go through this districting process. So, population equality, and the example I have here, in my hypothetical, we have a district of 100,000 people that would be going through the districting process. And if it was 100,000 people in five districts, it would be simply in a perfect world, they would have exactly 20,000 people. Special districts in California and actually anything but federal office in California or even in the country are given, whatever the mean is, you're given 5% on either side of it. So, in our case here, if with 100,000 people divided among five, that means 20,000 people. So, you would have the opportunity to have districts for the total variance of 10%. You'd have districts that can be as small as 19,000 and as large as 21,000. But to have the variance be that large, you need to have a really good reason. So, in my example here, these are completely hypothetical, but if we had a district that was at 19,250 as the smallest district and the largest district would be 21,000, the total spread would be 8.75%. And last week, a couple, at least one board member asked a question about, could you anticipate and adjust the populations in district to account for future growth? You can, in terms of play with those numbers a little bit, but at least at the snapshot we have for April 1st, 2020 census data, it needs to be within that margin of the overall 10%, and the lower the better in terms of going through that. Oh. So, equal population is just, the whole idea is that we need to, it's, it's about people, and it's every living heartbeat, as we talked about last week. It is not, it is not voters, it is not citizens. The population of your district is determined by every living heartbeat that was counted in the census of April 1st of 2020. And so, we want to have equal districts to allow people to have equal representation on your park board. The other point on this slide that's important is, is that there is some leeway allowed for population equality. It doesn't have to come down exactly to the person. Some of you may know that congressional districts in California actually do come down to the single person. But for local government districts and state legislative districts, they're equal, once again, within that, that variance that we talked about. And that allows you to be able to keep certain neighborhoods together, communities of interest together. It allows groups to be together that should be without having two people who happen to live north of Highway 50, part of a district where every other person in the district is south of Highway 50. And so, that you're allowed that variance to be able to keep those communities together. The Federal Voting Rights Act, I don't anticipate is going to be an issue within your district. We'll probably know a little bit more about this when we go through the process of drawing some potential maps for you all in the, in the, for our next meeting likely. But basically, the, the idea here is, and the idea behind the whole Federal Voting Rights Act is that in the 60s and prior to that, this federal legislation stepped in in order to prevent mostly southern states, to prevent them from discriminating against African Americans. And it basically prevented them from taking African American communities and dividing it up so that they couldn't elect a representative of their choice. And it also prevented them from packing all of them into one district so that they could only have one representative when they maybe should have had two or three. And so, basically, that's the whole idea behind the Federal Voting Rights Act. It is something that we need to keep a constant eye on to comply with federal law. And if we end up in a more involved process with that, it does become quite complicated, but it's something that we should be able to handle during the process of districting your park district. The next issue is communities of interest. As we talked about last time, communities of interest can be anything. I've told you all, it could have been, it could be dog parks, it could be airports, it could be school district boundaries, it could be anything. And so, and in your case, it very well could be some, one of the board members voiced a concern about the idea of having a community of interest being the original area that where your park district started. That is perfectly fine. That's, there's no right or wrong answer to that, but that seemed to be something that the, the board acknowledged. But as we go through this process, we may hear comments about people who want to be north or south of a certain road or east and west of a dog park, or to have certain parks all in one district because they need to be represented. And all those things would be fine. And most of the public comments you get regarding redistricting are about people's views about their communities of interest, whatever they may be. And, and, you know, in a fair and open and transparent redistricting process, those people should be allowed to be able to make whatever comments they want and allow the board to weigh those factors and consider how you want to draw those lines. For compactness, the reality is, is it's not such a huge issue in California. And, you know, a lot of people want district boundaries to be perfect squares, circles, triangles, whatever they might be. But California just doesn't look like that. The geography is one that is fairly unique, and we do end up with some elongated districts. There are some very complicated academic formulas to determine how close to a square or rectangle districts are. But generally, there are very few districts in California that I'm aware of that have been ruled somehow inappropriate or illegal because of compactness grounds. That rarely, if ever, happens in California. So, contiguity can be an issue, but contiguity is an issue that really tends to be more of an issue where you had unincorporated islands in the middle of areas or unincorporated islands or, or actual islands even, in the case, some of the areas we've been working in California where the island has to be contiguous to basically the port or where the boats come to serve that island, right? That's contiguity by transportation corridor. But in the example you see here on the screen, where you have two population centers that are on the east and west of a mountain range, you could say, well, both, in both cases, the ones on the left and the right are both, they both have contiguity. But the reality is, is that functional contiguity is what's on the right, where you have all of those people on both sides of a mountain that are far more likely to interact with each other than those that are separated by a mountain pass or some geographic boundary or whatever they might be. So, we look for functional contiguity that you can drive or easily move back and forth within a district. That's what is ideal. So, in going through the districting process, this is where I'd like to mention that even though the Fair Maps Act and even the State Redistricting Commission doesn't necessarily directly apply to special districts in California, it is important because there's an expectation by the public that they are able to observe the process, be involved in the process, submit alternatives in the process, and have those alternatives considered. And that's what actually the, the public's dissatisfaction with the way the legislature has done that in the past is what actually led to the passage of a couple ballot propositions to take the redistricting process away from the hands of the legislature and give it to a commission. The other thing that has changed over in redistricting over the last 20 years is, has been the availability and the democratization of data for redistricting. As I told you all last week, 20 years ago, I was really cool. I had a computer in the, in the state Capitol, and I could sit there and draw maps all day long, and very few other people did. And so, there was almost a monopoly of that information by a few very well-sourced people. Well, that's not the case anymore. There's all kinds of apps like Dave's Redistricting App, which is kind of the lower icon you see there, DRA 2020, which is Dave's Redistricting App. Some guy named Dave created this thing, and it's available to people who want to go and look at data and maps about any place in the United States. There's representable and district R. And people go through and they look at these, these data sets and try to come up with different maps. And we can help facilitate that with them, and you know, that's kind of my team's commitment to you and your community is to help people through this to not have there be very little barrier for people being able to be involved in the districting process for the Cordova Parks District. You know, I largely covered this about communities of interest that bring like people together for, for redist, for districts in terms of the way they look at it. This is usually when we're doing redistricting is when we go and tell directors and trustees, hey, this is what your district looks like. But in your case, you're going through districting for the first time. And so, this is just some basic data about the outlines of your district and the census data that was contained in it. You can see the census population count here along the bottom. You can see the total census count here up on the top, and, and actually, this is the 2010 census count. This is the 2020 census count. I also explained a week ago about how these numbers may be slightly different from those that you might see if you were to pull up a boundary within the Census Bureau's website. In redistricting in California, we actually do an appropriation of prisoners from where they are incarcerated back to where they were from, where the data is available. So, that's why these numbers are reflective of the statewide database and how they allocated those prisoners back to where they were from. Since I don't believe you have a state correctional facility within your borders, you didn't end up with people leaving, but like up in Lassen County, they had thousands of prisoners who then went to zero as all those people moved back to where they were from. You're at the opposite end of that. So, anyone who was incarcerated from your boundaries would be put back into your community. So, that's why the numbers can differ a little bit with exactly what's given by the census. And then the final slide really is the overall demographic information about your district. And then finally, is we have the next steps in terms of, of our next meeting, which is February 16th. And I think the general idea is, at that point, my team would likely be presenting you with some maps that are reflective of your comments from last week and whatever we get today. And then anything else that anyone else submits during that process for you to consider some lines on paper. And so, Madam Chairwoman, that's all I have for right now. Is there anything else you'd like me to cover?
Um, Matt, would you mind discussing the concept of sequence of voting districts? That is some guidance we need from the board that we haven't talked about yet. That's part of their decision eventually.
Sure. So, let me just close out my screen here. And you're talking about the order in which the elections would happen?
Right. So, in 2022, we do have three seats up for election. But I, my understanding is that part of this transition is determining when the districts would be up.
Yes. So, my recommendation to you all is that that's really the final step in this process. And so, what we traditionally do, I guess you could do it a different way if you wanted to. And I know that we got a recommendation from one of your directors that District 1 be the one that was historical. But despite that, draw five districts and then simply at the, at the last process or close to the end, once those districts, we have a consensus and everyone's largely moving there, you pick three districts that would be up in this next election and say, okay, it's going to be 1, 2, and 3, or 2, 3, and 4, whatever numbers you want them to be up, and that would be part of the ordinance that you would adopt indicating that. But that determination is made entirely by the Board of Directors. And I don't, I was thinking about our call, our previous meeting, and I, I just want to make this clear that my job is to get, my team's job and, and our job is to give you options to be able to consider. But this is entirely within the control of the board. You, you all get to decide, you get to determine the boundaries, and our job is to make recommendations to you and give you options. But it's entirely within the control of the board, within the confines of the law. Does that make sense, the answer to the question, Danielle?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, so, at this time, I would like to invite any member of the public who would like to comment.
I do see one hand raised. So, I would like to invite Angel Ball to comment. Go ahead, Angel.
Thank you and good morning. I must say that I don't have a lot of comments at this point because I don't think I have enough of my questions answered. So, I would like to ask some questions, and you can choose to answer them or not. First one is, it sounds like you're going to provide some sort of map so that the public can go in and play with that. Is that correct?
So, it, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You want me to give them, I have like four. They're not tough.
That's up to the chair, actually. I shouldn't have even bothered to say anything. I'm very sorry I did that.
You have a preference, Angel? Would you like them answered as you ask them, or do you want to ask all four and then Matt can answer them for you?
Um, I'm good either way, Matt. Go ahead. Answer number one.
Okay. So, we can do this any number of ways. And so, one option, so District R, which we've used in the past, hasn't been really good about taking new local government clients for special districts. But as we offered last time, if you would like to get on the phone with Fabian or Eddie or I, and we can go through and help you draw your own map, that's fine. If you would like to simply, well, I, the board's going to decide today whether they want us to make some suggestions on different maps for the next meeting to consider, and that's usually when the public gets involved, right? When they actually see maps on paper. And so, that's just the nature of the, the way this works. Or if you would like to wait until that time to say, no, we, on map three, this boundary should be there and move that. We're open to whatever at the direction of the board in terms of how they want to do that. But you can draw a map on a napkin, and we'll help digitize it and put it in the system and do that. And I told the board last time that 10 years ago in Elk Grove, an elderly man who came to all the meetings drew a map on a placemat, and that actually is the map that the city of Elk Grove is using now. We're happy to do whatever. So, it's, it's not hard. And so, we want to make this process easy and for people to be involved and submit whatever they like.
Okay, I did try over the weekend, and I couldn't figure it out. So, that's why I, I would like to know how to do that. Okay. My belief is that there'll be one board member in each district. Is that correct?
Um, that's up for the board to determine. If the board were to adopt a map where all five were in the same district, that would be up to them.
Okay, thank you. The money for the revenue that Cordova Recreation and Park District spends in the areas, the money still stays allocated the same regardless of how we draw the map. Is that correct?
This really only has to do with the election of the members. And so, the, the governance of the deal is guided by Pat and the board together, being able to do that. But there's no fiscal change in anything that I'm aware of. Tell me if I'm wrong, somebody, but I can't imagine this changing, changes any of that.
You are correct. There's no change in how we receive property tax and allocation towards funding CFTs and maintenance of our parks and recreation services. It's strictly elections.
And then, this process, if it's agreed upon and moves forward once every 10 years as the census population changes, then the map may change slightly. Is that correct?
Yes, actually, one of the board members last time asked that exact question. So, traditionally, just like with every other city, school district in the Sacramento area, actually even throughout the state and country right now, everyone's taking that census data. It was kind of screwed up because of the pandemic, so people got delayed. But generally, every 10 years, just government bodies with district elections go through the process of drawing new maps. Although I'm working with somebody later today that hasn't drawn new maps in 30 years, and so they're about to try to change that. So, that's on them.
Okay, well, thank you guys very much.
I have a question related to what Angel was mentioning. How does the public get in touch with you for help in drawing these maps? And so, are we going to have that posted on our website? Or how do we reference our public that is interested in, you know, offering some suggestions?
So, I would just suggest if they were to reach out to Danielle or somebody else and ask for a scheduling time, we would put Fabian or Eddie or I on the, on the phone with them, probably set up a Zoom so they can see the screen and share back and forth. And people could, you know, give it a shot or tell us they hate our maps or however you want to do it.
Okay, so have them make appointments through Danielle, and she can liaise on with you guys is what I heard. Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other further public comments?
Um, I don't see any on my email requests and also our customer service line reports. No additional request.
Okay, so, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing at 9:27. And now is the opportunity for the members of our board, if they have any questions. We'll start with Director Sloan. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. So, Matt, this redistricting is totally in the hands of the Board of Directors to finalize, correct?
Uh, yes. I mean, you, it takes three votes to do any of this.
Right. So, you said that, you know, her question was if you can make five people live in one district. But if we did that, all five people would be running for one spot. Isn't that how it works?
Yes, but I, I'm, I said that only to, to demonstrate to you that the board has the ability to do that. I don't know that.
Right, right.
That's your choice.
Did Angel get that? Because I'm not sure. That was kind of confusing.
Oh, well, I was certainly wasn't trying to mislead her, but the idea would be that the, the, you could draw districts where all five of you have different districts at one extreme, or the other extreme would be that all five of you would be in the same district, but that's all to be determined.
But we have to be on something in order to do that. So, listen, so, so we could, what we're, we're, we're dealt here is, you're going to come up with suggestions, but are you taking into consideration where each board member lives?
Initially, I'm not, and so I don't know where you live, and I'm not planning on doing that. You can adjust the lines to be able to do that, but I'm not considering where you live right now. And I'm also not considering the political data behind any of these maps. So, we don't have any election data from your elections or anyone else's election, and I wouldn't plan on adding that unless you or the board specifically kind of ordered me to do that.
How do we know how to draw lines that would evenly break the, the numbers at 20,000 each? How do we know how to do that?
Well, well, we would help you do that because we can certainly do that. And you'll see when we give you the maps, exactly how many people by the census. So, we have a three criteria within the census that we can take to the, of our building block. So, we can do census block, which is generally between 0 and maybe 100 people. They have census block groups that are a collection of three or four of those, and together they can be 0 to, you know, a few hundred people. And then we have census that can be 0 to 5,000 people, and they're a collection of census blocks. And so, we know that data from the census. It's publicly available information. And as we're building that, that, that's the data that we build these districts upon.
Okay, sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, Director Danzel, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions at this time, Madam Chair.
Secretary Yearwood?
One comment. I, I like the fact that you're not going to know where everybody lives. I'd like to see how the maps come out, you know, some of the rough maps come out without knowing where everybody lives. But the only other question, the only question I have is, so when these maps, these, these preliminary maps, you're going to come together for the next meeting, the third public meeting, how soon will those be ready?
Well, the reality is, is that Well, the reality is, is that we have already started working on some of them as different options, but we will, um, take all the comments like, um. Commissioner Danzel or Trusty Danzel from last time had his one comment in regards to the, the different, um, uh, park areas that needed to be gathered and designated as the first district. And so I'm hoping that today you might give us some more guidance, if you have any, and maybe not. Um, but we would, the idea is that we'd come back to you with three to five different options and then you can adjust them accordingly.
Okay. The only question, I just want to make sure we, we get these maps soon enough to get them out to the public, uh, well in advance of that meeting. I just don't, I don't want them to pop up the weekend before the meeting or something like that.
So that's. When, when we get these and, and I would imagine probably by this time next week or something there shortly, we would have not only the PDF version. Like you saw at the end of my presentation, but in addition to that, a Google map, uh, so that you can zero in on individual areas and you can look at. Where parks are or shopping centers or your home or your neighbor's home or whatever you might like to look at. You would be able to drill down on it and compare the maps accordingly.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
The, um. Secretary Yearwood, they have to be published, um, seven days before the next hearing.
Okay. Excellent. And if even earlier than that would be better too, but that's just my, my opinion. All right. Thank you. That's it.
Uh, Vice Chair Reyes.
Uh, yes, a good morning all. I really, I understood last meetings and I don't really have much to comment except for the fact that I really. Look forward to hopefully having the maps, uh, drawn, you know, according to like populations and, and, um. The other ethnicities or so, so that we can have an idea of, you know, of, uh, the, uh. The makeup of the different districts. That's all.
So can I respond to that, Madam Chair, real quick?
Absolutely.
So on each map, you would get the information you would have is you would have, um, the population. And then I didn't go into it in great depth today, but we talked about citizens voting age population for being important in the Voting Rights Act. So in each of the proposed districts, you would have the population, Latino, African American, Asian, CBAP, Citizens Voting Age Population Numbers for you to look at. Um, and, um, any other data that, um, basically is population data from the census for you to look at. Um, an overall population and how much the deviation is from the mean. Um, and so. That's if you would like something else, please let us know, but that's traditionally what, uh, all the other entities we've worked with have requested. And once again, if you have, after looking at them, if you decide you would like some other data point, then please let us know.
Now that sounds good, Matt. Thank you.
Okay, um, I have a few. Questions, um. Under the Federal Voting Rights Act, is there a requirement that, uh, public entities go to by district? Elections?
No, only that if you have districts, they need to meet a certain criteria, but there is no requirement under the Federal Voting Rights Act that you go to district elections.
Okay. And then the California Voting Rights Act is if you have by district elections, they must not be packed or fracked. According to.
No, so, um, that requirement packing and cracking is under the, um, is under the Federal Voting Rights Act. The going to district elections is unique to the California Voting Rights Act. Federal law, federal law prevents packing and cracking.
Yeah.
The California Voting Rights Act, which you've seen cities like Santa Monica, Modesto, Plombdale. And other districts where they've had litigation, very expensive litigation, all of those lawsuits are brought under the California Voting Rights Act.
Okay, which is the one that. Means that you cannot have. Districts that disadvantage the voting rights of minority groups.
Well, well, the, the advocates for both the California Voting Rights Act and the Federal Voting Rights Act would argue that both of those, um. Legal standards, um, protect minority voting rights interest. But in terms of. The example I gave regarding the southern portion of the United States and the way. Some of those southern straits, southern states treated African American voters and citizens, that is uniquely a federal Voting Rights Act issue.
Yeah, then could you say by California, how it distinguishes from the federal again?
So Californias, the California Voting Rights Act and most practical purposes really requires local governments. Who are, have at large elections, if you can show racially polarized voting, it requires you to go to district elections if it can be proven. And so that, that's really the limit. And what we're talking about here today. I would imagine that one of the reasons that you are considering going to district elections in your entity. Is to avoid litigation under the California Voting Rights Act. That's why most people choose to do that.
Okay, um. Just out of curiosity, since the only real, um, request you've had so far. About drawing district lines is that the, uh, original parts of the district be district one. What other criteria will you use for different options to show us?
Well, um, I think we'd probably look at basically major, uh, roadways, um, collections of certain parks. Um, because you're a park district, right? So that, that would, that would make sense. There's some other kind of major. Thoroughfares like we talked about highway 50, for example. Um, we might, in your case, I believe everyone's in the same school district, right? Is that accurate?
No.
Okay. So we might look at school boundary lines.
No. Good, Reyes is in a different school district.
Yeah, we, we've established there's more than one school district. In fact, I think there were three.
But those might be good lines to, for us to consider as we're doing that. But once again, we've got to get to the population equality number. And so one of the things that's helpful when we do individual drawing sessions with. Members of the public or even board members is people say, well, I'd really like this one school district to remain whole. Well, it could be. Too large under population equality or too small. And so when we take a look at the numbers, we're like, well, wow, that, that district's, you know, two and a half times too big. Or it's such a micro portion of a community, it needs to be far larger than just that district. And so that's part of the learning process that we go through.
Okay, um, and then you mentioned that, um, our intent to explore by district elections by resolution is what. Indicates that. Well, you, you gave it a term that I can't specifically remember, but should somebody send us one of those letters saying?
Safe harbor.
Safe harbor, thank you. So this resolution that we've already passed gives us safe harbor until. The next election, right? Or until the final meeting in April.
Would you, it gives you safe harbor until you, um, if, if you're, you basically hit, signaled to everyone, we're going to district elections. And by adopting this, nobody can go and file a complaint with you, nor take you to Sacramento Superior Court and force you to go to district elections and litigate that. Your safe harbor provision prevents attorneys from suing you and return, re, and, and being able to receive their legal fees being paid for by. The Cordova Park Districts to, to go and litigate that. That's your protection against legal fees by attorneys that would do that. Um, I would imagine though, and the question was asked of me last week, well, what happens, you know, basically the hypothetical was what happens if we don't do this? Uh, my guess is that that would say you were in the safe harbor and you decided to leave the safe harbor. And, and I would think that that would make you vulnerable to that, but that's a question for your legal counsel and that's not me, but. I'm unaware of anyone choosing to do that. That would be a unique position to take, but, um, and that's why I'm uncertain in terms of what the outcome would be, but. Since you've adopted the resolution, you're going through this process. If you choose to go forward with it and through it. You would not be subject to litigation under the California Voting Rights Act.
Okay, um, so it would be interesting to know when that safe harbor expires. Because under, uh, hypothetical that the board is not enamored at this time. Um, in, uh, of going to district. Um. Elections because we don't see the need, for instance, then at what point? Um, other than receiving a lawyer's letter. Um, might we reconsider? For instance, could we pass another resolution saying we'd rather look towards the 2024 election? For instance, but is that also just a legal question?
That, that would be a legal question. Once again, that would be, um. I'm unaware of any entity in California that's adopted a resolution to seek safe harbor and then left that. I don't, I'm unaware of that. There may be cases I'm not aware of, but I'm not aware of anyone doing.
Well, in this instance, not to put too fine a point on it. Um, the pursuit of by district elections was not originated with the board itself. So the board may in fact not be in favor of by district elections. You know, just to let you know. Um, okay. So those are all the questions I have. I'm going to sort of ask, um, for the board. Who, the, those that have already spoken, has anything happened or come up since you last spoke? A few minutes ago where you, it may have given rise to another question. In other words, does any other board member have any other question?
Okay.
Okay, Director Sloan.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm really confused more, but I appreciate your questions, Terry. Uh, Chair, Chair Lineback, cause. I know this, this is sort of a, this is, this is, it's an interesting process and I'm, I'm like, like, uh, Director Yearwood said. He's, was interested in seeing how they were going to break up our, our, uh, boundaries into five equal spaces. But I, I, I'm just confused, like. We're doing this to avoid litigation, but, but since we started the process, we almost raised a red flag for. Now anybody can see us that we're going through the process and now that will follow us and make sure that we continue it. If we don't continue, they might sue us, kind of a thing. So I mean, it's sort of like, uh, uh. I, I just, I hope we're doing the right thing. I, I just, I, I just like, you know, that's all I can say is. So that's all.
Okay, anyone, any, excuse me, any other director?
Yes, I'd like to comment.
Yes. Vice Chair Reyes.
Um, I, I was following your questions and it, it dawned on me that, uh, one of the reasons why we probably. Uh, are a little concerned with having to, uh, s- uh, to, to start this whole redistricting process here. Is also because we have, uh, concerns about the build out of a new community, you know? All the developers and all the development. And we were, as one of the directors had questioned, uh, concerned about, you know? Uh, the build out would obviously increase the population in these other, um, uh, sites of our district. Um, so when you were talking about saying, hey, you know, uh, would it be, uh, before we even start the mapping process? Would it be, uh, uh, probably wise for us to talk to our legal counsel and see? Uh, whether we, the, the redistrict, read, the districting is necessary at this time. And what is our liability, exposure to liability? I, I understand what you're saying. And I think that's a, a good point to take. So I, I think we do need to check with legal counsel and talk about, um, whether this is. A good time to approach the, the districting or whether a postponement till 2024. Uh, might be a, a, a better, uh, time because we definitely will have a better sense of. Uh, more, uh, population growth in the areas that are currently, um, in, in development.
I, I have another question.
Thank you, Chair Slimeback.
You're done, Vice Chair Reyes?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Director Sloan.
Um, so say we do go forward and, and in 2022, this on, in next November. We have an election and, uh, three board members are, are equally divided and they've got their little sections. Um, and where, uh, the other two directors live, uh, are not in that area. Do. Does everybody, everybody, all the constituents, a hundred, whatever people who are voted, registered to vote, they all vote? For those are just the people living in that area vote?
No, just the people who live in that area would vote in this, assuming that you went to district elections and three seats were up, actually three seats would have to be up. Only the people within those districts would have to vote. And then two years later, in 2024, the remaining two districts would vote in that election.
To the whole, all the people in the actual district have, don't really have a say in who all the directors are.
That's true.
It takes the, it takes the, uh, the break, the makeup of our, our board of directors out of the hands of the voter.
Um. Well, it gives them the same proportional opportunity to, to impact the board. Um, and just like a, um, city council districts or congressional districts or legislative districts or any of that. It's a, just a different way of electing people.
Right, that's. I know, I just don't agree with it. Sorry. All right.
Chair Lineback.
Yes, go ahead.
So Director Sloan, part, part of what I think you're trying to get at is right now. Your, your cycle, my cycle, we're on different cycles and it takes 15, 18,000 votes to, to win district wide. Mathematically, it could drop down to 1,200 people that is all you have to do to get, get reelected.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that. There could be a, a case where. You know. A lot of people don't like one of us. And only people who like them are the people living in that one little area. And so it just, it just, to me, it's like, we're dividing our district and our directors. Into five different, uh, people. And without the, uh, the census of the entire district.
Uh, I, I, I concur with that, yes, but yeah, so things change and. Unfortunately, not all change is good, but it's, it's changed and it has, you know, that's what we're required to do. So, you know, we're going to have to make the change, just like we talked about the other night. And like Angel brought up, what happens to the money? It's not like we're going to turn around and we're going to say. District one now has, you know, a fifth of the budget and district two has a fifth and three, four, five, and that's, that is your money you do with it as you want. We're still going to have to, you know, play with the whole, whole budget. I mean, it's not. And yeah, it's just different and it's, you know, not something I think everybody in this room wants to deal with, but it's what's. Statewide is being required of us, unfortunately.
I would suggest that we're not required to do it. I would only suggest that we're required to do it if somebody files a lawsuit that says you have racially dis. Um, effects going on within the boundaries of your, um, park district. And then, uh, we would have to do a census to prove that we are not in fact violating that. Otherwise, there's no absolute requirement to go to by district elections, is my understanding.
Well, this map that's going to be drawn up is going to show. The, the ethnic breakup of each, each proposed district, correct? It's gonna, it's gonna prove that fact if it's, if this, if the information's there. The public's going to know each district is e- either equally balanced or one area is, is more ethnically, uh. Dense than the other, right?
Those are, those are different questions. And so, um, they will certainly be balanced. We will not propose a map for you that's not legally justifiable in terms of population equality. Um, it is, uh, I don't know that you'll have any Federal Voting Rights Act issues. And then the communities of interest will be open and available to you that, that, those won't be right or wrong. It would be people's different perceptions, but. Nobody will be able to determine racially polarized voting analysis from the maps that we give you. That's a totally separate data set that involves voting. Um, data and how people vote and the, the, um, the ethnicity of voters and how they cast votes in racially polarized elections. People will not be able to tell that by the information that we present to you.
So with that information, with that information, you're saying that no lawsuit could be put up, put against us, our district with that knowledge?
There's nothing in those maps that would empower somebody to draw a racially polarized voting analysis from them. That's something entirely different and none of the data that we would have would empower them or make it any easier for them to do.
So in that case, the maps that are drawn up are, are drawn up, but it doesn't mean we have to. So in that case, the maps that are drawn up are, are drawn up, but it doesn't mean we have to actually have a, a district-wide electric, uh, election. But just have the maps.
Well, you, um, I'm a little bit confused by your question. Can you restate that?
Well, I was listening to what Chair, uh, Chair Lineback was saying. It's up to us to, to say, vote on, to go into the district. We're actually in the process of seeing what the math would be and the, and the, how we would break up into a district. But the fact, we're, to go forward into actually having that district-wide election is up to the board to vote on? Or, because you said the maps are gonna be drawn up and there's, because these maps are gonna be drawn up, it's gonna prove to anybody who's out there who's seeking litigation against us that, that we're not, we're not breaking any rules by having a, a stacked area. You know what I'm saying?
No, let me be clear. So you, you've adopted a resolution that's available to the public because it's a resolution that you passed and it's public available document indicating that you're seeking the safe harbor under the California Voting Rights Act. You've done that. If you do not go to district elections in this next election cycle, that will be a red flag for anyone who would be following that process and say, these people said they wanted the safe harbor, they've now out of the safe harbor. Um, I believe that somebody would have the option of being able to do some kind of litigation with you, whether you start over from the initial demand letter from the California Voting Rights Act requires from an attorney, or whether they take you directly to Sacramento Superior Court. I don't know the answer to that. That's your legal counsel's question for that. But these maps, if you, you make them available or what you'll be taking a look at here, maybe at our next meeting, you can decide, you can take a look at that. But um, it sounds to me like the, the, from your statements anyway, that at least in your mind, sir, you're thinking, well, if the maps aren't what I like, then I won't move to district-based elections. And I guess that's one of the things that you're considering. It'll have to weigh as we go forward, but that's entirely up to you.
Yeah, I don't know.
Rick, if I can interject here, it's my understanding that, well, first of all, we all know that anybody can sue anybody at any time for any reason. So you just start with that premise. But what we're being told is that none of the surveys or maps that we're gonna be presented with, because this data set isn't explored in this process, is whether or not there's any racial polarization going on. So if we opt to stay with that large elections, somebody could sue us stipulating that they believe that the district is racially polarized by not being in district, by district elections. And we would have to, at that point, prove that that's not true. And if we were to lose, we would be responsible for the other party's legal fees. You know, I happen to think that we are not low-hanging fruit, frankly. There's a lot of um cities and school districts uh and other sorts of districts out there where um there's a lot more interest in by district elections. And in my opinion, at least, a park district has, you know, basically a single purpose, which is to provide recreation and parks. And so we're not offering a lot of varied services that people are saying, well, you're, you know, um allocating your resources in uh, uh, an unfair way. And so I think, you know, the chances of us having maybe a lawsuit like that, well, that's a gamble. It's an absolute gamble. I mean, I think the risk is lower for us than for other public agencies. That doesn't mean the risk doesn't exist. But it's one of the reasons why I asked the question, you know, does it have to be twenty twenty-two? Is there a way for us to um you know, sort of feel like there's no rush to this right now? Why are we rushing to this? You know, we didn't actually ask for this to happen. We were advised to at least pass the resolution and see where it goes. And now, you know, the advice is more like, well, you've passed the resolution, so you're, you've just put up a red flag. To me, that feels a little, you know, like unwanted pressure. It felt like we could, you know, look at it, weigh it, decide, and not be told, well, now that you're looking at it, you're at bigger risk. I, I don't like that at all, to tell you the truth. But it is what it is. And it's not that I don't believe it. It's that I don't know that we were told that before we passed the initial resolution and entered that safe harbor. So I was just wondering if there's another safe harbor down the road for us, if we feel like this isn't the time?
I would just add that there's no general manager or city manager in California under the way the California Voting Rights Act is set up, and that I'm unaware of any city that's been able to show that there's no racially polarized voting within their boundaries. It's, it's present pretty much everywhere. Um, I, I say pretty much everywhere. I'm only qualifying that because there might be some area, but I'm unaware of what that is in California that can force racially polarized voting. And every city manager and steward of public resources, because of the expense associated with those cities or entities that have fought it, have lost, and it has not been worth the resources of the entity to do that. But they have all recommended to their boards. I don't think it would just be Patrick or Danielle or anyone else who got any normal third party to come in and review their decision. They would support the decision that was made um to make that recommendation to you because it's just so fiscally prudent. And that's why the legislature did it, is to make it so clear so that people would, they want to incentivize people to do this.
Well, that's, I'm, I indicated that I think we're not low-hanging fruit at this time. Uh, number one, you mentioned fifteen special districts have done it. I don't even know how many thousand there are in the state of California. And I don't know how many of them have gotten a letter from a lawyer either. Because I do think that schools and cities are um, you know, the focus right now. You know, that's just my opinion.
Terry, I know for sure that, that I, I talked to one of the school board members and the school district is in the process of going, going to it, but not the city of Rancho Cordova.
Not yet.
I haven't heard anything from them. That would be the, that would be the lower fruit.
Right. They, they're much more likely to go after a city before they are a recreation and park district. That's just my opinion. You know, just like we know that there are districts that have, you know, um, the L and L's that are subject to you know, they went in with a fifty plus one vote. It's the new L and L's being formed that the um, that are getting sued to show um special benefit, which they have to, the special benefit districts. And the old L and L's, like our old L and L, nobody sued us yet. So there are groups out there that are going after fifty plus one tax districts, but they haven't come to us yet. So that's what I'm saying. It just depends on, you know, where the focus is, you know, for a given issue within the state where people think things are unfair, overtaxed, or whatever their issue may be. So I just think they're gonna go after somebody before they come after us. And it is a, if you will, I mean, I mean, I wouldn't vote against this if I thought there was any racially polarized voting going on. I, I'm not opposed to by district to protect the rights of voters. I'm just not sure I see that any voter is being disadvantaged in this district. Because uh, most of our decisions about how things are handled are you know, set in stone by where they're located within the different assessment districts that exist, not within, you know, groups of voters. You know, it's like you can only spend PMR ID money in the PMR ID. You can only spend, you know, the new development assessment two thousand eighteen dash one in those areas. So there's much more likely to be disparate treatment by uh the amount of money spent. However, we have no control over that because that's how the assessment districts were set up. So I do think we're, you know, not disadvantaging voters. I'm not pro-disadvantaging voters. I'm not trying to protect, you know, um, Latino voters, disabled voters, you know, you know, foreign language speaking voters. I'm not, I, I, I don't think any of that is happening, which is why I'm not like, you know, feeling the love here about going to by district elections. So that's just where I stand on this.
The good stance. But there's a red flag behind you.
No, there's that red flag. Uh, anybody else, directors? Did I, I heard a tone. Was that indicative of anything? No. Okay, so I guess this item is now, we're not taking any item at this, any action at this meeting. So uh, the next public hearing is gonna be um at our February sixteenth meeting, at which there will be maps to consider, which, as I understand, we will see at least seven days before the meeting to uh, to uh reflect upon. So we're gonna move now to item D, which is the closed session.
Thank you, Chair Lineback. We have one item in closed session. It's a conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to California Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine, Cordova Recreation and Park District versus the City of Rancho Cordova, Sacramento Superior Court Case Number three four dash twenty twenty-one dash eight zero 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 three seven oh five.
Okay, so we are now gonna recess to the closed session at ten oh two AM. Bye, thank you.